Tuesday, February 14th, regular city council meeting. I'd like to invite you, invite you to rise for our invocation with prayer and place of allegiance. I ask that Mr. Shirley be with you.
Before we do, if you've been watching the election, it does make you awfully proud when one of our kids wins that thing in the playoffs in Nashville. I watched him in Vegas. Wow. What a long way. Much Christ has heaven's glory. Ask more that you come over us and you just leave tonight and help us do the best that we can of the good this see, good this see. In the name of Jesus Christ.
May I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, baby. Is there a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes of the January 9th, 2018 regular city council meeting?
Second.
Motion is contained, the second is the reading discussion. There is none. All those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, there is no opposition. Yes, they're approved. Presentations, recognition of new hires. Manager?
I just have one. Eric. Come on.
Yeah, come on.
This is Eric Cather. This is our water park manager. Yeah. So we are very excited to have him.
Mr. Neptune?
Yes, it. Mr. Neptune Allen. That's it. So you're coming from, where is he right? New York.
From New York.
That's right.
I'm traveling around, which is Fort Worth, New York, Illinois, Thailand, and back to South Carolina.
Wow.
We lost Chelsea.
So we're excited to have him on. I think 17 years. Started out in the light garden where it was like that.
Well, welcome aboard. And we've got some younger folks here. We give them up, take them where we are.
Oh goodness. Oh no. It's a surprise. We're getting there. The Lacy River is getting filled up. I think they've done the first layer on the wave pool of the concrete, starting on one of the buildings this week. But he's in and out of that construction trailer on a January day.
That was good.
A lot of planning, a lot of planning and doing everything they've gone up. So it's really exciting because that always comes with the progress that we've been established. So it's really cool to see that. It's awesome too. Great to hear.
Well, welcome aboard and thank you for all your efforts. Okay, we've got a proclamation, Random Acts of Kindness proclamation. Is there someone here to say that?
I'll take that. Ms. Jane?
You got anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Richardson could be here tonight.
Okay.
He's having transportation problems.
Okay, okay, good.
Sending you his concerns.
All right, this is a...
People, people?
That's right. And I'll let you tell us something about it and then I'll read part of the proclamation.
People, people, as a nonprofit organization, was founded by Mr. Clayton Richardson and his Hazel Puyet 26 years ago. It was organized for, as they say, a black man and a white woman for the betterment of the community. So we went and doing the Martin Luther King Program, the Random Acts of Kindness, political forum, and other things in the community. And anyone can come and be a member. It's not a fee or anything. Anyone can join.
Okay, and we are proclaiming the month of February 2018 Random Acts of Kindness month. And ladies, I'll let you do that for the camera there. Cameras. Okay. Thank you so much. And before we get too far into our program, I'll see we've got a Boy Scout approved there. Is there a... Somebody can tell us what's going on here?
Yes, we've got four Cub Scouts, Carmen Seeger, Brendan Jones, Russel, and Red Aug Bird. They're working on a badge called Build a Better Community. And part of that is to meet with some government officials and find out what they do and hear about a current issue in our community.
Okay, good. Sounds like an exciting evening out for you. Laurie Metz, the water park manager. So welcome aboard, guys. Our next item is African-American Cemetery and Cochrane College students. Ms. Jennifer?
Hello, everybody. And I would like to actually have my students stand and come up here and join me. So this is a state-owned class. So I teach at Cochrane College. I'm a communication professor. And I also am currently the coordinator for the African-American Studies Program. And several years ago, when I moved here, I was inspired by Mrs. Alina Graham. And not only was I inspired by her, but she just puts in me and said, "You're going to work with me and I will do whatever she says." And so when she told me about this cemetery, I was really interested in it. And not only because I like cemeteries, because I think they're a place, they're living places of history. So these are where we put our dead, but also where we hold our history. And this is a cemetery that has been overgrown. It's been neglected but not forgotten. And I think that's something that I want. It's not been abandoned. It's been neglected, not forgotten. But what it does provide us is a glimpse into Hartsville's history so that when we move forward, we can move forward with hope and togetherness. And so the committee that Mrs. Graham started with, there was a couple council members on there plus community members, and I was one of them. And they've been trying to raise money in order to work on and fix up the cemetery. So we've gotten some grants since for cleanup and the city is now able to provide some funding to maintain the cemetery. But we need to build awareness that it exists and to raise some more funds so that we can include it in a historic marker or benches so that people can sit on. We need to fix up some of the gravestones, for example. And so I taught a class last semester called Visual Communication. And what we did in this class was, it was a semester-long project where we created a public relations campaign to help raise awareness and hopefully some funds for the cemetery. There were some challenges. One being that the cemetery looks like woods at the time. And as a visual communication class, we know that visuals are really, really important for sending messages. But if you only have something that's overgrown, you're not going to build a relationship with that. And so the students did several things, and I would actually maybe put them on the spot a little bit, to explain some of the things that they did. Rob?
I worked on a brochure with some of my classmates on Mr. Williams' mother who was buried there. And he was down in Florida for a while and came back up and wanted to visit his mother and couldn't. So we kind of used her as an example to kind of, you know, have empathy for his plight. And, you know, so we did that. We also worked on, I think, a little American talk about that.
For Day of the Dead during the month of October, beginning of November, that we hold at Cochrane College, me, Rob, and Catherine, who could be here, we did a Day of the Dead altar to give a representation of how some of the gravestones had looked in the cemetery. So some of the gravestones on the altar are not dober, but we did have names of people that are buried out there. And we actually carved the names of some people that are buried in the cemetery on the visual mini gravestones on the altar. And Rashad, what did you do?
So this summer, I was fortunate enough to intern with NBC out in Myrtle Beach, like one of their affiliates. And we met with some of the community members. Immediately my mind went to, you know, how can I put this together in a package? And send it off to the station so they could possibly pick it up, you know, show it to more people so we could bring in more money. So I just took the time to put together a news package that everyone was able to see.
Unfortunately, I don't think we can show that. I don't think that clip is working well with our digital. But the other thing that we did was we collected some research, trying to figure out who's buried there, and then created stories around the cemetery. And that's what Austin and Deshaun worked on. And I think those we can actually, we can share some of those. And so that was, I think we ended up making three of these. We have a really nice interview that Rashad made. And so hopefully what we can, and the brochure, and I think you're working on another brochure?
Trying to work on another one because there are, I think, 25 to 30 fetes that are buried there. So I'm going to try to work on one and hopefully have that brochure out. And that way we can possibly get more money donated through that.
Hopefully, these will start appearing on the city's website so that we can start sharing through our social media, start raising some awareness, and building some connections with this history, with landmark. So I wanted to thank Mrs. Graham for inspiring us and moving us forward as a city with this. Thank you.
Truly amazing the work that they've done. Went down to the Day of the Dead and back in the fall. Met with some of the students several times out at the cemetery and the dedication, everything was just really, really great. So thank you for all you've done there. I hope you have nothing to elevate the publicity around this cemetery.
Now, I did get an email this last week from somebody who went to go visit the cemetery. And because of the work that you guys did, that everybody did identify veterans, their father is buried, their grandfather is buried, and they're veterans. I was asking about those stones. I was able to give her a lot of information about the work that you guys have done. I'm inviting her to come along with us to do a survey on the Saturday, 17th.
So this Saturday at 9:00, we're doing a survey of the area. So we're going to be documenting the gravestones, seeing where depressions exist. And just, because we're trying to get another grant to help pay for it so that some of those gravestones can be repaired.
I would just like to give my gratitude and thankful to the city management, the mayor, and the city council members, and cemetery committee of organizers, and thank the people that served on the cemetery committee. They've done a wonderful job. And I first began to get it, asking me to get it cleaned up. Couldn't hardly get my volunteer. I had people say, "Why do you want to clean up the cemetery?" "Well, because it needed to be back again tomorrow." Anyway, they did a wonderful job and I admit my heart is proud to see the work that they've done. But there's still a lot more work to be done. And they say we already got it restored tomorrow and we plan to put it back in. I want to thank you, Dr. Harrison, and the students at Cochrane College for the work that they did for us. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you. There was a concern also that there weren't flags on the graves.
Yeah, yeah.
There will be flags when the cemetery is completed. It would be easier to put them out there now because they're locked and something buried. And too many stones that we've had, a lot of them are broken and hidden. It's not available to put flags back in now. But they have been planned to put flags on the graves.
Again, I'd like to thank everyone. And this is Mrs. Graham's baby here. So it's been a very successful time and we've helped hope for bigger and better things as we go forward. I think we've got one more mini video here. Go ahead and come get a few up here.
Thank you for letting us share this with you.
Back to you again. Adam Matt?
Sure, I'll just be brief. I wanted to welcome back Sharon. Everything's sort of late. Our meeting has been gone for several months, so it's nice to have him back there this evening. Also, I would send out updates from time to time. One I did not send out, which people started asking about today, was the gas station at Walmart. And it is being rebuilt. It's going to have, actually you can walk in, it can be more convenient store. So I just wanted to let you know that since I had not sent that out to you guys. And then the second part was your economic interest. We always start reminding you every month that way. We can say we put it on the record. I actually attended ethics training in the past two weeks. And there's been some changes and updates to the ethics law. So Sharon's going to be arranging for training. And we hope to invite the entire county. So we want to invite school board, county, everyone to come to the training. Because it's a lot different than it used to be. So we want to make sure everyone hears the information that Mary Catherine and I were able to hear at that meeting. As you know, we had to start adding your spouse on your ethics forms last year. You don't have to add their salary, but you have to add where they work, what their income is from, also any other jobs. So if you work a second job, that's supposed to be on there, your council salary, you're supposed to put on there. There's lots of different things that... If someone gives you a tin of hachus for Christmas, guess what? That has to go on there. So lots of things keep us out of trouble or given us out of confidence. So we'll be bringing someone in hopefully March, April? April.
That's the way it would be.
It'll do in March. But we are going to bring someone in April, just to get us up to date on all the new changes.
I have like $100,000 that I found.
Just that much. They started in 2016, I think, to change the law. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda, all of you received that, the package. New business, item manager, item number six.
It's a lot.
It is a lot.
Wow. Okay. First reading ordinance, 4324, ordinance of the City of Harson, South Carolina, amending and restating section 10-38 of the City's Code of Ordinances, as most recently enacted by ordinance number 4291. Data, June 13, 2017, amending and restating section 54-67 of the City's Code of Ordinances, amending and restating section 10-91 of the City's Code of Ordinances, amending and restating section 10-96 of the City's Code of Ordinances, amending and restating section 42-108 of the City's Code of Ordinances, amending and restating section 46-76 of the City's Code of Ordinances, and other matters related thereto.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Okay, you've heard the reading of this. Is there a motion?
I got a question. Is this something we just do periodically, do we ever clean them up?
Lawrence is here, please.
Let's get a motion and then we can go through the discussion part. Is that a motion, Mr. Shirley? Okay, motion and seconded, discussion. Mr. Shirley was asking if something, is this something we normally clean up and periodically clean them up?
So that is the idea, periodically clean it up. As you recall, we recently amended and restated the provisions of the International Property Maintenance Code by action of council in June of 2017. And on the heels of that, we spoke with Ms. Matt and she had some additional considerations that she wanted implemented into the ordinance. Particularly feeling and addressing the Unfit Dwellings Act under state law. And so by the terms of this amendment, we basically incorporated some of those state law provisions. But it's explicitly stated on the record that your enforcement of the International Property Maintenance Code is a separate, independent right of action from the state law codified Unfit Dwellings Act provisions. And so to the extent they do overlap, that is certainly authorized. But the extent you would like to prosecute or otherwise execute on properties under the Unfit Dwellings Act, that is a permissive authorization. It could otherwise be done by council. It's authorized, it's permitted, but they're two separate processes. In addition to that, and going back through some of the appeals procedures, we also noticed that there were some inconsistent provisions in the application of your appeals board. The way that the process for administering appeals from the decision of the code enforcement officer was otherwise implemented. And there was some language that needed to be addressed and other provisions of your administrative code sections to make those all very consistent. And so the thought process was, if we're going to make those kind of administrative follow-up changes to the Dwellings Act, let's make one, let's do it all in one fell swoop. Let's have a master ordinance that we're not having to go back in and spot and pick particularized sections. But let's do everything in one fell swoop. And so it's a mouthful. It's a lot of things that are changing. There's not a whole lot of administrative things that are changing from the version that you adopted in July. But we wanted to make sure that it did get through the back end.
Ms. Matt?
Again, looking at the state law, it says that this occupancy force that we're getting ready to pass is permissive.
Yes.
And as I understand it, that the International Property Maintenance Code is permissive.
That's correct.
And that state law is the one that is actually the law?
No. So the way it works is that the Constitution is the broad ground of power that gives the city all of the rights and responsibilities for things that you can do. And then to the extent that the legislature does not otherwise prohibit it, you can take a certain course of action, you're authorized to do it. And so the good news is, is that they have, you have constitutional authorization to amend and abate nuisances if you otherwise determine. And there's a general provision of Title V, which is the municipal nuisance provision, that allows you to do all things necessary to abate nuisances and protect public health. And that includes providing for a statutory lien against property to the extent the city incurs costs in trying to abate and remediate people's property. And following through in that same authorization, state law also provides that you may adopt certain uniform international codes. And the International Property Maintenance Code is one of those permissive codes. Unlike the building codes or the electric codes that are required and mandated by state law, other things that every time they make a change, you automatically roll those up because statutes require you to do them. You don't have to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code if you decide you didn't want to do it. If you didn't want to go through the process of administering nuisance properties in your community, there's nothing that requires that you otherwise do that. What we're trying to do is kind of build the bookbag of options that you have in code enforcement for your code officers to be able to go out and administratively deal with any situation that you possibly could run across by basically having the fallback provision of having the state law authorization to abate nuisances, then also adopting this international code that's recognized. And while we're adopting the code in its procedural, excuse me, in its legislative finding for perspective of what constitutes a nuisance, we have independently adopted our own procedural guidelines. Because you as a legislative body say, you know, what works in California or Texas doesn't exactly work in Washington. So the ordinance that you're really adopting tonight lays out the administrative enforcement authorization with respect to notice, the appeals of that notice, how people are able to actually go out and go about abating and fixing their properties, what the process is if they fail to do that. Can you actually go out and go on the property and demolish things? All of that is now specifically laid out in a procedural method that works for the city. In addition to that, there has been also a separate state law that Ms. Matt was talking about, which is known as the South Carolina Unfit Dwellings Act, which was a version of the state legislature trying to codify a state law version of the International Property Maintenance Code. Many of the provisions overlap. There's a lot of the same kind of general enforcement mechanisms. But there are also some administrative hurdles and hiccups that make that a little bit more difficult administratively to process. And so we basically give you the authorization to use either one at the code enforcement, of the code official's permission.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm just not comfortable with that with it being at the code enforcement official expression without having a board that will go along with that.
A board in one sentence.
When they go to the, they appeal to the appeals board for any action that the code enforcement gives, right?
Right.
Any violation.
Exactly.
So when a property, like right now, we have properties that should be condemned. And I don't know that they all are condemned. Mr. Morgan, are all the properties in the South Harson area of historic buttress that need to be condemned, are they already condemned?
Some are already condemned since I've been here. They're primarily my predecessor did a good job of condemning. Some of the placards have been removed due to weather and some have been removed by people. But for the most part, what I've observed, they haven't been condemned. And I've gone through and done some more. As you know, already there's some abate or demolition concerns. So what I can see, I understand, and with record, a lot of them, the houses that you speak about, losing a lot of their vacation, have already, were already placated, but again, some of the placards are removed. You know, so that is a matter to go back over and just replac it in some property.
Other thing is, when that condemnation process happens, what happens to the tax rate?
It's a reen on the property. So it's the same thing that would otherwise happen. If a property deduces underlying value, if a constructor has been removed, that then becomes an county accessory question as to what the value of the property is.
No, that's not what I mean. Okay? When the property is condemned for a violation, it does not hold the same value as it did before it was violated, before that condemnation process. Many of these properties still hold the real value, the true value.
Again, that's outside of the city's control. That's a county enforcement authorization as to property value.
So when we go, because I look at it from a code enforcement officer that I used to work with. And the property's there, they find out whether taxes are being paid on them. And they all, because they have what's called a better property board. And some of the things in here, in this new ordinance, I don't want to lock us in or lock us out of being able to do what we need to do. Like if we can't find all of the people who have an interest in the property, what's our solution for that?
You're paying the property with a placard and it puts the world on notice.
And then we just go on and do our demolition?
That's correct.
Without any further notification?
That's correct.
I just need to see if the properties are condemned and the tax rate needs to change. If we're condemning, then I think we should be notifying the assessor.
I think that's without question. So the follow-up process to that would be, if you're condemning property and then demolishing property, the city also has a vested interest in recovering the cost of that demolition. And so that's going to require the city to take the proactive step of filing that lien against title, which means that the assessor would have to...
Yeah, I understand that. But there's a link, there's a gap between condemnation and demolition.
Certainly. The fact that the property has been condemned, however, doesn't change the underlying value until the assessor's office determines the value has changed.
So who's going to notify the assessor?
The, it doesn't change, the condemnation doesn't change the value. It's just that it's an authorization for the city to move forward, to take appropriate actions, to remedy the stolen property.
You know, I think realistically, properties probably change value day by day. You know, and you're looking for points in time, the notifications and things like that, you know?
So that's, I mean, by state law, the way that the property value changes is that it sells. There's a county-wide reassessment or there's a substantial rehabilitation, which means that typically if a building permit gets pulled, the assessor's office is supposed to come out there and make a determination as to value. There's nothing that prohibits the city from... There's nothing that prohibits the city from sending the assessor's office a notice and say, hey, we've condemned this property, go out there and take a look at it.
Right, that's what I'm trying to say.
Sure.
Or in light of this condition. Because the problem is, the properties are in the condition they're in, but they're still holding, they're full of tax value.
That certainly can be amazed.
So then we would need to send something to the assessor to get that approved.
We need that, and also follow with the county clerk's office.
But the assessor's office is not going to ad hoc adjust property tax values without the property tax owner requesting that adjustment.
And that's not something we can affect by ordinance, that's by the county.
That's a state law requirement.
There are certain tripliers that require the assessor to do that.
So busy cleaning up our municipal language for ordinance, but in order to really affect the property value, that would have to be done by the county.
That's correct.
Lawrence, do you want to speak on the meeting you had with the county to talk about process?
Sure. So we did meet with the county and a variety of the folks in the county's offices, so the county assessor, the county auditor, county treasurer, the clerk of court, county administrator, and the building with tax officer for the county, trying to deal with certain of the properties that have fallen into the condemnation process, have otherwise been foreclosed upon, or fallen into the building with tax process without actually having been then administratively foreclosed or administered through the forfeited land commission process. And so the reason for that is that the county has historically not instituted and utilized its forfeited land commission process to clear its tax rolls of building with properties. And there's a variety of reasons as to why that hasn't happened. My understanding is that they are in the process of having internal discussions as to how to reconstitute that organization. And once a property, which is now in the discretion of the county, transfers into the forfeited land commission, they can sell that property to whomever they decide, wipe clean all the outstanding liens and charges. And so there's been some ongoing discussions with the county as to how we can get some of these properties that have basically kind of been in tax purgatory for 10, 15, 20 years, administratively relieved through running it through the forfeited land commission process. And maybe on a one-off basis, also talking through creating a city process for being able to deal with some properties in particular that are on the side. And I think that's a consideration that likely will come back to council at some time later.
Other questions or concerns? Thank you, Lawrence.
No problem.
It's a very convoluted problem, and I appreciate you simplifying.
There are no easy answers on this, of course. It is not something that may be very straightforward.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of passing ordinance 4324, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed by name?
Mr. President? Before we went to, after we got out of the discussion part, I want to say, I want to ask about amendments in this particular ordinance that we're getting ready to adopt. If there's anything that needs amending, we can amend that once we.
Well, this is first reading, so we've got next month that we could make amendments. You know, that would be in order, and, you know, I would, this is just personal view, if there are amendments, you know, I would hope that we would run them through Lawrence, run them through someone to make sure we don't gum up the works with something that might, you know, sometimes things are more complicated than things. Yes, it can be amended. Okay, we were, we had the ayes, all those opposed. Okay, ordinance passed, or first reading passed, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, what would you vote?
Uh, uh. Madam President, I don't know.
Sure. First reading of ordinance 4325, approving and accepting grant monies from the Byerly Foundation, authorizing the conveyance and transfer of certain old property and other matters related thereto. Lawrence is staying put because he is the expert on that.
Okay, let's see if we can get a motion, and then we can go into discussion.
Motion is to approve.
All right. Second. All right, and motion and seconded. Mr. Mayor, you want to lead us through this, but I have a couple of questions.
Certainly.
I defer to you right now.
I'll attempt to get a brief synopsis, and then y'all interject with questions or interrupt as you otherwise see fit. The ordinance in front of you tonight is a, basically serves two purposes. The first one is to approve and accept a grant from Byerly Foundation for an amount not exceeding $500,000. As I think we've talked about on other occasions, Byerly Foundation has committed some money to the city and its independent corporation, the Partial Public Properties Corporation, to acquire properties that are currently under option. The corporation actually met earlier today to approve the loan documentation that Byerly has filed behind this with. But the grant portion of it is going to be directly funded into the city, and the thought process behind the acceptance of the grant is to reimburse the city upwards of $500,000 for properties that you have already acquired for the planned development and outside project as it's otherwise being called. City has also obviously incurred additional and other costs to this point, upwards of about $1 million of other property that has been purchased with a long-term view of redeveloping that area, which is actually the other side of what this ordinance does. And it's the idea behind taking the properties that have already been acquired by the city with city funds and transferring those properties by conveying them into the Partial Public Properties Corporation as the development arm of the city for the long-term redevelopment of that particular area. So the ordinance in front of you tonight accomplishes two purposes, it is to explicitly state on the record with the city, accept the grant proceeds from Byerly Foundation, and then authorizes the listed properties and exhibit to the ordinance to then be transferred to the Partial Public Property Corporation at a cost below their fair market value. Obviously, the city purchased them for various significant amounts of money, we're going to be transferring them in to the corporation for less than the value that you otherwise pay. There's specific consideration behind why that's being done, economic development, the idea of long-term tax base, consolidating those properties for the long-term organic growth, and then using the money that the corporation ultimately intends to now acquire from the Byerly Foundation to exercise the remaining options that it has to then consolidate. All of those properties have, all of it, subject to some mortgages that will be the consideration and loan security for the remaining loan with Byerly Foundation, all with an eye towards the ultimate redevelopment of the area as the long-term plan to develop multi-family housing and other commercial development facilities on site.
So in simple terms, this is almost like collateral?
Yes, so basically, you're transferring an asset that right now the city doesn't otherwise intend to develop in its own name, but instead plans to develop it through its Public Properties Corporation, which is deemed an instrumentality for, an instrumentality of the city for state law purposes. And you'll recall that when you created the Partial Economic Development Corporation, or by the terms of the Partial Economic Development Corporation, which I actually created, city council ultimately has maintained control. You, as a three-member board of directors, city council is responsible for appointing and authorizing two of those directors, Byerly appoints one of those directors. So the way the ballot laws are drafted, you may remove any member of the corporation for any or no reason, which is a legal way of saying for any reason. And so it ultimately is the discretion of council to still control that organization, but the development is going to be administered through the corporation. They don't pay taxes on it, it's going to be treated as a component unit, an agency in the city for operational purposes, but there's some considerations from a financing standpoint to run and administer everything through the corporation.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question about the BIRD test. What is the BIRD test?
So the BIRD test is a state law consideration for whether or not economic development meets the necessary prerequisites to find public purpose. And so taking a really, really broad view of what you're doing, you as a council body are seated in your seats and make legislative policy ultimately to benefit the public at large. And so your corporate purpose is to do things that benefit the public through, you know, paying taxes, making sure that the police come when they're called, when you do sanitation, when you do water and sewer, you know, provide all those administrative services of running the city. Historically, there was a fault in the 40s, 50s, and 60s, and into the mid 70s, that economic development was not a public purpose, was not a core function of local government. And so there was a variety of cases up through the 70s that stated, those cities, you are not authorized to provide local government incentives to promote economic development, industrial development, growth at any level, that was not one of your core purposes. That kind of flipped on its head with a case out of Sumter, Sumter versus WD Properties, where actually they laid out this very test, the BIRD test, in deciding to reject whether or not something constituted, whether or not economic development constituted public purpose. And so it gets to this idea of public purpose being kind of evolving constitution, of an evolving theory of state law, this idea that we have a living, breathing constitution and a living, breathing legislative body that can continue to make changes as it sees fit. And so into the 80s, we started to see South Carolina as a growing area for economic development, especially in the industrial development setting. We had a case that they then reapplied those foundational principles and codified specifically by, by, they're not codified, but made legislative findings at the Supreme Court, that if you met this four-part test, it's explicitly laid out in your ordinance, that you make a determination, what is the goal of your, of the public initiative, or private public parties, or public parties' primary beneficiaries, what is the benefit, is the benefit to public speculum, and what is the probability that public interest will ultimately be served? If you can meet those findings by specifically laying out that, yes, we have done all of those things, and the public benefit is ultimately served, and to what degree, we all recognize that the ultimate goal here is for a private developer to come in, develop this parcel property, and he's going to make money on it. There's, you know, he's not doing this out of kindness and his heart. The thought behind that is, is that he can have a profit-making motive so long as the city's core purpose of trying to bring in multifamily housing options, bring people into its downtown, drive new tax dollars in the community, drive new jobs in the community, bring people into the corporate city or center of town, all of those are seen to generally outweigh the benefits to a one-off development. So the city as a whole is benefited by you taking this action if you decide, you know, if that's what you ultimately decide in your legislative decision.
Any other questions for coverage? Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Is that area the only place that that would work, would work anyplace in this state, what would it be?
Certainly. You just have to make the findings and take the underlying action to do that.
So for purposes of this loan, it has to be used for the.
That's right.
This one has to be.
This one is to that.
I'm talking about the future, while we have the development in place.
The harshful development corporation's corporate purpose is for the promotion of a better parcel. And so as long as it meets that, the underlying, if that's the underlying basis for the action that you're taking, Partial Public Properties Corporation could serve that ultimate interest.
Yeah, because we don't have any industries, you know, on that side of town or anything like that, so that's why I'm asking.
And that's certainly, you know, one of the considerations that also gets built into this, is any city gets into the economic development game, you're not trying to promote the creation of industry, you're trying to bring in mom and pop entrepreneurial, retail, commercial, residential, you know, the 6% asset ratio of properties that are going to drive your tax base. Because at the end of the day, the city is administered and generates cap, you know, generates operation capital from basically four sources. You've got business license, you've got property taxes, you've got money that otherwise comes in from the state, and you've got money that you create through your enterprise fund, your water and sewer, and now your waterfront. And so there's not a whole lot of sources out there, so anything you can do to spend public dollars to then generate future public dollars is seen as a worthwhile initiative that meets that necessity.
So the kind of reforms for this specific project, but in the future, if you want to, it doesn't have to be housing, it could be a commercial or any other.
And there's nothing that says it just has to be this organization, the city can create other nonprofit corporations as it's used in a particular area, you could create an organization specifically for a, an area, I don't know, it takes a particular new basketball area in the city, if you're determined to do that. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Your in-house, favor of signature, say aye. Close by name? I have a matter on the agenda under new business, first reading of ordinance 4326, the manager will publish.
An ordinance approving an application for a special property tax assessment for a stored property, one said, East Carolina Avenue, tax number 56062018, and other matters related thereto.
Okay, you've heard of the reading by title and presentation of the city manager, this time chairman retaining the motion, so. Mr. Mayor, my commotion would pass ordinance 4326.
Sure.
Is there any discussion? Your in-house, favor of signature, say aye. Close by name? I have now the agenda's resolution 2-18-01, resolution for approval of the bidding warrant for the acquisition of insulation of the solar power and camp system to fulfill community development block grant CPG match requirements, is there such a motion? Is there any discussion?
Mayor, let's see, which community is it? Oakdale, is it Butler?
It's Butler District, it's Butler District, yes. And our county enforcement officers, also it's a Puma-Tupi grant that will be, that will help families, and I think he's helped identify the areas that will go in, because he can only be in the project area for the CPG grant.
The CPG grant that we got?
Sure.
For the NIP? CPG grant?
Didn't have anything to do with NIP.
Okay.
The one that tore down the village, this is part of that grant.
Is that the, you know, the boundaries of the area of the grant?
I don't know the boundaries.
Very narrow, like Marion Avenue.
Days, I think it's around there.
It's not very far, you know, it's got to be right there in.
Right around Making Village.
And there's a true solar.
Truly solar.
Because, you know, sometimes when you buy the solar lights, and you, right by, and you see the lights, you know, shining, there's one gone over here, one gone over there, and I know we had some problems with the cameras opening, to open our community, I don't know what kind they were, I don't know what kind they were, but I hope these will work.
Right, our goal all along was to try to work with Duke Energy, and it's not been possible to do that, to put onto their poles, so we were going to have to run with power to random poles that we were going to have to arrive with a meter box at each one, and we cannot make that work. So our camera guy that we use at the city, we really like him, he does a great job, and he suggested we try the solar, give it a go, and hopefully it'll all work out for us. We're also talking about using solar lights at the water park, solar cameras.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything further? Your in-house, favor of signature, say aye. Close by name? Resolution, here, because I have a matter on the agenda, resolution 2-18-02, resolution to adopt and approve rental fees, the addition of the partial museum, is there such a motion?
To approve?
Is there second? Any discussion? Your in-house, favor of signature, say aye. Close by name? I intend to pass the resolution. I have 11 on the agenda, resolution 2-18-03, resolution for approval to apply for a 2019 highway safety grant program for continuation of impaired driving countermeasure efforts. Is there motion or not?
Mr. Mayor, my motion, that's first motion, 02-18-30.
Okay, is there any discussion on the resolution?
If, this will give us a DUI officer, a DUI officer?
Yes, so we actually already have one, that was a part of our 2018 grant, this is just continuing our staff work, so it'll continue paying 100% of his salary, we don't pay anything for this one.
Is there anything further?
With 2019?
Yeah, for both of them, right now it's 100% fully funded grant, and then we're just continuing it, and it'll be 100%.
All right.
Okay, there's nothing further, all of favor of signature, say aye. Close by name? Resolution, here, item 12 on the agenda, resolution 12-18-04, a resolution of the city council and city of Harpsville to adopt and approve rates and charges for Neptune Island Water Park and other matters related thereto, is there motion or not? Second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Mayor, we can, these season tickets, where they go on sale, grandparents are just walking down the wall.
No, we are working with our software people to put them online, so we can go ahead and start selling them, which will be very, very good.
Would it be like a picture ID?
Your picture's actually not on the ID, we're still designing a flash web, but when you check in, we have handheld, and your picture will show up, so we'll know if you show us your card. That way, and the card can be used year after year, so. We don't like to dispose of the card, it won't date on it, I think.
Someone will have to go and take.
They will.
So, if a child, children have to show up.
Hand your picture, I'll see if it's you. Go ahead. So, it's hand ID on our handheld, so if we're able to do it, it's a, the picture will appear, but like she said, the best part is that these cards are reusable every year. It's just a few clicks of a button that I deactivate, and I don't have to.
Wow. This could be the same setup as the splash pad where you come every day, but you pay every day, unless you buy a set of plans.
Right. That would be it, yes.
That's the way it should be. From early on. All right, is there any further questions? Hearing on all, favor, signify by saying aye? Opposed by name? Resolution carries. Item 13 on the agenda is motion there, executive session pursuant to South Carolina Code Freedom of Information Act, section 30-4-7, paragraph A, sub-paragraph 1, for the discussion of committee appointments to fill vacancies on the airport advisory board, architectural review board, board of appeals regarding technical code enforcement, PD regional transportation authority board, and to fill two new appointments on the planning commission, is there a motion?
So does.
Any discussion? Hearing on all, favor, signify by saying aye? Opposed by name? Ladies and gentlemen, we stand in executive session with.